Hey, it is six. The City of Glendale Common Council is now in session. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Adam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Bukovich.
She's asked to be excused, actually.
Alderman Doherty. Alderman Gelhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Smalsling.
Here.
Hollerwoman Shaw. You have a quorum.
Like comment, Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? All right. It looks like Alderwoman Bukovich has connected online, so. She's there, okay. All right, consent agenda. We had three items, the adoption of the minutes for our last meeting, approval of accounts payable and denial of a claim. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Move Alderman Doherty, is there a second?
Second.
Second about Alderman Gelhard. Any discussion? Okay, without objection, we'll consider the consent agenda approved and we will move on to new business. First item of new business tonight is a service request software launch. So this particular item, if you recall, we set a goal with Carl last year that we would continue working for, looking for efficiencies, looking for ways to make government more accessible to the residents so that everything doesn't involve people always having to come to City Hall for everything. And so Carl and I talked last summer and he started working with a company, the See Click Fix, to create an app for the City of Glendale. And an app that allows us to be able to report things like, you know, property maintenance concern or a pothole, but also include a lot of other features, like being able to pay your water bill and things like that. So all through an app on our phone and basically at this point where everyone's carrying a computer around in their pocket. So with a handful of exceptions, I know of one person in the city who said to me, I don't own a computer and I will never own a computer, but most of the rest of us have some semblance of computer access. So that's what this is going to be tonight is the unveiling of the app, which I've had on my phone and I think we were up to eight things that have been resolved that have been put in there already. So a handful of us have it. So whenever Carl sees a pothole, he puts it in there and then when Charlie fixes it, it's resolved. So those sorts of things. But Carl, go ahead and turn it over to you to walk us through the See Click Fix Glendale app. And before you start to actually, Alderwoman Bukovich is on the Zoom, so if you could make sure that the attendance reflects that, please. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. So tonight we are doing the public launch of our See Click Fix app and it's also a web-based program that's available via a link on our website. You know, we're excited about this launch because it's really our first go-around in being able to track and manage servers requests that residents submit, as well as it allows any resident or any business owner or anyone driving through Glendale to download the app. Use your phone, use the location service on it, select a type of service request and submit it based on where your location is. So I did that a couple of times today. Actually driving through Crestwood this morning, saw a bunch of trash that accumulated on the road that's right by the community garden, used the location, took a picture, submitted it and it's been assigned to Public Works and they should have it resolved hopefully soon. So it's mainly a service request software program, but it also comes with two other important components. One is a community notification system and an internal work order system, and I'll explain those here real quick. So this is the app and on it says one. So if you download the See Click Fix app and hopefully you guys can encourage your constituents to do that. There's a number of resolved apps or number of resolved service requests on there. I think it's up to eight now. There are some in there that haven't been resolved, but there's also links to anything that we choose to put on there. So once, and if we make building permits available online to submit, you could click a link and submit a building permit application from here. The link to register to vote is on here right now and as well, people can go and click a link to see past city council videos. So we can choose and monitor that, whatever we want to put on there. This is sort of the front of it for Glendale. It allows you to submit servers requests as well, which is kind of what we'll get into here real quick. So either online or via the app, anyone can submit a server request. If a resident comes to the City Hall or makes a phone call, staff has and will continue to enter them into the request system so we can track and manage these service requests as they go through from the beginning to the end. They are assigned to the staff based on the request type. And the residents who submit it, provided they provide an email and a contact information, will receive updates as they happen. So as progress goes and we acknowledge it, or if a pothole is scheduled to be completed next week, we'll put in a notice in the app and they will receive that update that it has that attention. And then they will also be notified, of course, when the request is completed. So the other part about the server request thing, you guys receive a number of monthly reports. One that was added last month, which I think is very helpful, is the building permit software app. This one will be one that'll come after this. So there'll be a list of all the request types we have, the number that we received and then the number that we have resolved. Sometimes there might be carryover, we receive one the last day of the month that may not be completed till the next. So there's no way of checking that, but that'll be part of the reports that you guys receive. We also can narrow it down by aldermatic districts. So we put in GPS or GIS information in there. You know, we can make it public or I can just provide it to you guys on request or on a monthly basis to know who's submitting requests when and in what aldermatic district. So we do have that capability here too. So when somebody goes online or if you open up the app, this is the first thing that somebody will see, which is a map of the different requests and the different colors mean it's just been received, acknowledged. And I believe the orange is completed. If you click on it, you see the information. There's certain types of requests that we've made private. So if somebody submits a request for a house watch, obviously we don't want everybody knowing that somebody's going out of town and that the police have been requested to wash their house. Or property maintenance. We felt that we shouldn't publicly put out there that somebody's, there's a request for property maintenance at somebody's house. So those will go in, they'll be monitored, but they won't be publicly here on this map. We've also hidden contact information from people. So if people put in their name, address, that won't be included in there as well. So the community notification, so the city, and we went through this a little bit ago when we had a missed garbage pickup day for a specific area as a result of a storm. We have not come up with a great way for emergency community notifications like a water main break, an emergency police situation or like a street closure. Within this app, if, as long as you download it and enable notifications, we can send out emergency notifications for things such as that. We can also narrow it down by geographic region. Right now, the only narrowing down we have is by aldermatic district. So there's six and then there's the total city. So if there's something that's occurring in District Three, we can narrow it down to there. We can certainly provide additional geographic areas to narrow it down, but right now we just have the aldermatic districts. So that's an option and opportunity too. We primarily will use this simply for emergency notifications, not that there's a parade next week or something like that. The final part of this system is internal work order system. You know, most, if not any of the residents will see this part. But the internal work order system allows the city to electronically assign mainly Public Works employees for like a sewer backup or a water main break. And then it allows us to keep track of the resources and the time that we spend on it. So if there's a hydrant that's been knocked over and we need to resubmit for reimbursement from an insurance company, we track the resources, it's all put into the system, we submit that to the insurance company. It allows us to keep track of it here internally so we know what type of work orders we have, how long they take to complete. And then also with the insurance company, it allows for easier and faster reimbursement for those claims. So that is really all that I have on this. And there's a picture on there, you know, we had eight apps when I took it this morning. There's the picture of the link to all the links we have in place in the app. And if you want to submit a new service request, which we recommend everybody do, you just hit the plus sign and it will go through the system. It's pretty simple and easy and we will start our marketing stuff tomorrow on Facebook, Nextdoor and all that stuff.
And when you go into the map and you can see where all the areas are that are tagged in Glendale, because the City of Milwaukee uses See Click Fix, you can actually see a lot of property or whatever things are registered from the City of Milwaukee. You go to the pins or, you know, there's a lot of them, different things here. So, yeah. Alderman Gelhard?
So having received many complaints over the years, I know that sometimes the answer is, that's not our problem. That's somebody, that's the state's, that's the county, somebody else. Is there a mechanism for getting back to these people to say, that's not a city issue?
Oh, yes and no. So some of them, like there's a parks maintenance request in there. If it comes back as Clutch Park, we will refer the resident to County Parks for the maintenance. If, and correct me if I'm wrong, well, actually I can speak to this one for block parties. So we won't allow a resident to submit for a block party because they have to contact the clerk's office and fill out all this information. So we block the request from coming in. And it says, here, click this link, this is what you need to do in order to fill out a block party permit. I believe we've enabled the ones for like a broken garbage can and lid. Is that correct, Charlie? But there are ways where if there's a specific thing that is not the city's responsibility, we can block it and then issue a message back to the resident. We've only done that on a couple of them. We haven't done it on a ton of them yet, though.
Well, there we go. I think just to clarify that too, it's a work in progress. So obviously as Carl said, as we're unveiling it, but we're going to finally, you said Alderman Gelhard, maybe some issues. I mean, streetlights is one too. We Energies, City, City Milwaukee, so I think there's going to be a little bit of, you know, we'll still reach out like we do and we do identify with the We Energy that will submit it on behalf of the resident or things like that. But, you know, as we go, we'll figure out a better way to do it, make sure we can then information out and taking care of the resident's concerns or her complaints.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you so much for the work on this. Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be very. I know, it's like.
Thank you, but it is a big team effort. Everybody here contributes to the process and getting this unveiled.
And then the flood of requests will come in once people get word. So.
Thing is, people are already contacting us for these kinds of concerns anyway. This is allows for a much more efficient way of reporting it. They don't necessarily need to come to the alderman or the mayor every time they've got one of these concerns. And then we direct it to the city website where they could file a property maintenance complaint or some of those other things. Now we can, hopefully they'll just. Well, actually if someone goes to report it and it's already reported, yeah, then they don't even, oh, I don't even need to report it. It's already been reported.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to make as many of them public as possible. So if someone see, well, I, there's a dead animal here. Oh, it's already been reported. I don't need to report it again.
Right. All right. Thank you. Next item is payment in lieu of taxes agreement template. And I'll turn it back over to, to city administrator and the city attorney. I believe we do have an update on one of them that was not actually a pilot, but was a memorandum of understanding. And then we've got some ideas here in terms of how we can, how we might approach pilot agreements. So.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess Nathan, I'll just start off and give a quick, brief introduction. This item came up a couple of meetings ago regarding the current pilot agreements that we have in place. We have four of them. Three of them were presented for three religious institutions. There is a fourth one with the Village of Whitefish Bay or the Public Works Facility on Lydell Avenue. The common council asked staff to prepare information for a possible master or future pilot agreement program. Basically a resolution establishing a policy on if and how pilot agreements would be established here moving forward because there was not a lot of information on how the previous ones were established or under what circumstances. So in the memo here, basically staff is asking to determine whether or not we want to establish master pilot agreements. If you do make some of the selections that were in there, basically under what circumstances would we establish a pilot agreement? And what sort of fees would we expect to try to negotiate for? And then looking for feedback on the direction of the existing pilot agreements. And then within there, there's sort of the template for who, which is really everybody or nobody. And then, you know, how, so if it triggers a zoning map amendment, text amendment, PUD, and then under what circumstance or how would they make payment? Is it based on the assessed value of the property? A flat amount or some sort of negotiation or combination thereof? I guess turn it over to Nathan to fill in any of the legal.
Sure, thank you. I think it's pretty well spelled out in the memo. You know, I think if, so you start with, from the idea that if there's a tax exempted organization that wants to perform a particular use in a zoning district where that's allowed and they move in, that's pretty much it. I mean, there's no, you know, you could theoretically ask them to voluntarily make some kind of payment in lieu of taxes, but there's no obligation to do that. And if there was an agreement in place, since there's really no bargaining there, you know, it wouldn't really be enforceable, it would just be a voluntary payment. But where these, where these really come into place is when, you know, I think the most easiest example to understand is, you know, you've got a, an area that's zoned, you know, like a business district or something and there's an entity that might want to come in and say, you know, maybe it's a, some other tax exempt entity such as a medical facility or something like that. And they say, okay, well, it doesn't actually fit the zoning, but this is the best place for us. We'd like to enter into negotiations with the city to find a mutually agreeable arrangement. And so they make some kind of payment in lieu of the tax that's equivalent to the tax. And then you allow that to go into that zoning area. And so there's a give and take on each side. There's some sort of negotiation that goes on there and then you enter into. And then that's generally that it, that's, that's how it appears. These four were entered into. I did call, I did reach out to the former city attorney just to see if he might have remembered anything about the one that was labeled as a MOU, thank you. That was the word. I couldn't, that was on the tip of my lips there. An MOU as opposed to a a regular contract and he wasn't exactly sure. It was so long ago, but, but generally, yeah, that's, you know, when, when there's a property that is not necessarily, you know, they want to institute a use that's not necessarily allowed in the zoning district. Okay, then there's a bargaining there and there's consideration paid and there's consideration flowing in both directions. That's generally how these come out. So, you know, I think, I think the important thing is for equal protection and equal access and all those other issues is that whatever the policy is, you know, is that it's uniform across the, across the board and it doesn't necessarily exempt one particular type of group or one particular use from ever having enter into a pilot, but other uses that might be, that's where we would run into issues. So really, you know, it's, it's, it's a policy decision. These are, these are enforceable as contracts. And when you, when you enter into them, there's a lot of factors that go into it. What kind of services might be needed? Where is it physically located? You know, what other uses is the city giving up by allowing this? So there's a lot of independent factors that go into the negotiation of an individual pilot. So I think as, as Carl indicated, you know, the, the main question is when that situation arises, do we try to negotiate a pilot or not? You know, I think, so I think that's sort of the, the the main overarching policy question. And then, and then, you know, in, 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 in the individual cases of the four that we have here, within that framework, what do you want to do with these? You know, you certainly, there, there are contracts that the city entered into. The city has a right to approach, you know, the other party and renegotiate it if they, if they want or rescind it or whatever it might be through mutual agreement. So there's, you have a lot of options. And, you know, you, you've got some potential policies that were, I think, I think Carl drafted those. So I think you have a lot to talk about.
Oh, I've got a couple of questions for you. First of all, Carl explained to me earlier, the one that with the Ora Tora group there, that that is a memorandum of understanding and not a pilot agreement and is not under the same, it's not drawn up in the same contractual way that the pilot agreements are. And if challenged, it might be unenforceable. Is that?
Well, yeah, I generally, and that's why.
It's also never registered with the Register of Deeds Office.
Right. I, that's a, that's a great, that's a great point. That's a great question. I, I actually, I tried, I reached out to John Fuchs to see if he, there was some institutional knowledge that might have given us some insight as opposed to why that one was created as a memorandum of understanding as opposed to, you know, the contract like the others. And he didn't, you know, he said, that was so long ago. I don't, I don't remember specifically. He thought it might've had something to do with a change in use which triggered a, you know, some, some concession on the city's part in, in terms of a special use or exemption or something like that. But he just couldn't remember for sure. And he wasn't in the office, so he couldn't, couldn't dig, dig it out. But, you know, he said, the other option is it might've just been that Mazelotsky threw something together and just pulled something out of the archive and threw some signatures on it and that was it.
Because typically a pilot is filed with the Register of Deeds Office, correct?
It can be, yeah. I mean, it can.
All the others we have are.
Yeah, yeah. Is that one not? Is that what I understand?
Right.
And, and generally, yeah. And generally memorandums of understanding are not, don't rise to the level of, as you mentioned, a contract. It's sort of a mutual agreement that, hey, I'm going to make a promise to do X, Y and Z and you're going to make a promise to do A, B and C, but there's no exchange of what they call consideration. There's no payment or, or bargaining where you're giving me something and I'm giving you something in return. It just, it's just, you know, so that one, it may be, it, it, it may have been voluntary. You know, we looked at the zoning and it might, it might be that the use was allowed from the get-go and there was just a payment, a voluntary payment that was made in recognition of, you know, whatever it might've been years ago. Or there might've been something where the, where the city changed a zoning or gave a special exception or gave a conditional use or something along those lines that triggered the MOU. I can't speak to, because I didn't draft it, I can't speak to why it was done as an MOU and the other ones are enforceable contracts. But you're absolutely right that MOUs are generally seen as something less than, they're not, they don't have the same bundle of rights as you would with, with, with a standard contract where you can demonstrate that there were consideration flowing in both directions. So, and, and I wish I could tell you more, but not having been here when it was created, I just, I just don't know.
So the second question I wanted to ask is, why are religious organizations? Why isn't it all non-for-profits? Why can't religious organizations be considered separate and have a separate consideration than the other not-for-profits? Because we do have Supreme Court cases, like when Hobby Lobby sued about whether or not they had to offer health insurance through, under the ACA because, for religious reasons. Or there was a large, one of the large insurance companies that was run by a church didn't want to provide certain things that the ACA said had to be covered. And there was actually carve-outs in federal law for religious organizations that don't apply to all the other not-for-profits. They only reply to religious organizations. Why is the city unable to offer? Like I could understand Meta House, when they were approaching us to put a drug treatment center, we said, okay, we would require a pilot agreement to move forward with that project. But they'd be otherwise not-for-profit. They wouldn't be paying any other property taxes to anybody else. They'd only be paying to us. That's a different than, you know, we don't have any land set aside in the city that a church or a synagogue or a mosque or any other religious organization could move into the city and purchase land that's already zoned as S1 and then operate there. So any religious organization from this, from starting about 20 or 30 years ago forward, the only ones that have moved into the city in the last few decades have been required to do pilot agreements, which the existing churches and synagogues were not required to do. And it just, to me, on the surface seems as if we only have these pilot agreements with religious organizations and then the Village of Whitefish Bay. It just seems as if we're targeting anyone wanting to purchase land that is currently taxed and then use it for a religious purpose. It feels as if we're specifically requiring them to pay taxes in the city. And so I guess I'm confused about why religious can't be separated out here. Why does it have to be all or nothing on non-for-profits? We either do pilots and then A through I have to be included. Why can't we say we're going to do required not for all not-for-profits except for religious organizations?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I think where you run into difficulties, and I don't want to make plaintiff's case for them, but when you start to pick winners and losers with respect to policies and say certain groups are automatically exempt from any payments in lieu of taxes, even if they undertake a use that it's not zoned for in a district and then say, okay, well, other groups that are performing activities that aren't religious or, or, are not exempt, you know, you could still run into, you could still run into somebody making that argument.
That arguments are made at the federal level over and over and over.
Well.
And, and the courts have upheld over and over again that religious organizations are different than all the other not-for-profits.
Organizations come in that are religious groups and we're going to have a tax problem because we're not going to have, like, any tax on those. That's going to be a problem.
Typically religion, religion is based on like your belief system. I would love to not have to pay taxes as a belief system, but I, I think that's really where the Hobby Lobby isn't coming with like their health insurance and such because of those sort of concerns. But, but I do see the equity isn't there for like a church that's been here longer. And then we have these synagogues that had to move in and they had to pay a pilot because they wanted to have something similar, but they just happened to not have a place to go because they weren't there at the beginning. So, and also you look at even some of the, these institutions and the, the Jewish synagogues, some are paying and some aren't, which is not also something that's equitable. So I think it's a timing issue here more than anything else from my perspective. I, my personal opinion is if someone's taking something off the tax rolls, we are locked in on what we can tax because of the state. And yet they're telling us, well, these should not be taxed on a state level. Well, we still provide those services. So I guess I would say across the board, if we take something off the tax rolls, we should be compensated. But I don't know what we do about these existing ones that are kind of in this non-equitable state.
The tax rolls, it doesn't mean that the money doesn't come from somewhere. Remember, we still set a levy and that levy is divided up based upon all the properties in the city except for the ones that are schools or city buildings or whatever that aren't subject to taxation. So the levy would still be the levy. I mean, we would still get the same amount of money. It's just that, you know, if we, the pilot agreements, every other property is going to pay a dollar more a year to cover the cost of what wasn't, or $2 a year or whatever I determined it was a couple of weeks ago.
Right. I know it's blended, but I guess what I'm saying is this right now is still, we would not be having that as existing pilot cash coming in because it is not included in what we have as our taxable levy. And is that correct? Like, let's say we, we bring someone else on. We no longer have that, like, the example was Meta House. Let's say they came in and unfortunately they decided not to move forward. But if they did and we had a pilot agreement, we would still be having that as taxable income for the city. It wouldn't be diluted across everybody else.
Yeah, that is correct. So essentially what happens in the property taxes, so for the existing institutions that we have set up, there's separate line items in the budget where we send a bill and then they pay the bill for the property taxes. And the tax levy still remains a zero collection, zero bill like it would for any other taxes and property like a school or anything else. In the future for the Meta House, what would have happened is the property does pay taxes now and that property tax levy on that would have disappeared. So it would have gone down, let's just say $20,000. We would have instituted a pilot agreement that would have paid us $20,000. So the tax levy would have been reduced, a new line item would have been created and the tax levy would have shown zero coming in for that property, but additional income comes in from the pilot agreement on a separate line item and they would be billed outside of the tax levy.
But to Mayor Kennedy's question, that, let's say $50,000 that we would not have gotten, would that just be diluted across the rest of the tax base or we literally not have that $50,000?
That is not diluted around the tax. We're not allowed to make up for that loss. Okay. So if that money disappears, you can't, you can only increase the levy by what you, you gain in new construction. That is the only increases that you can have.
Alderwoman Shaw?
Combination of that, listening to Alderman Doherty, you know, I believe my understanding from him is he's trying to protect the citizens from paying additional taxes as the tax source for a lot of this stuff, even though we have commercial properties. But you have to realize 18 years ago, yes, I know the number, we were almost going to leave. We were almost going to leave the North Shore Fire Department because of financial situations of meeting the budget and covering all our, our costs at that time. And at that time, Mayor Tepper stayed on until he could at least accomplish the agreement that would at least make the, um, shared services before the North Shore Fire. And then here it is almost, you know, in the 18, well, here it is 18 years later and then Milwaukee was having their issues until they had their tax situation, uh, rectified via the state. So back then we were having issues as well to make sure that our budget was met. So a lot of it is, and then if you take those properties off, you're also, you, you're, you were saying it sounds like it's going to be collected elsewhere, but obviously not. But yet if, you know, in respect, it'll also go over the residents. And that's who we're also trying to protect as their elected officials.
So the clarification here, and I believe I, if we eliminate a pilot agreement, that is a different line item. It is not a part of the levy. So if we had to cancel a $5,000 a year pilot agreement with one of these religious institutions, that is $5,000 we lose. However, the levy itself, if someone comes in and purchases a property and we say to them that, you know, our levy still remains our levy. We levied was at, uh, 14, 15 million dollars this year, right?
Uh, 10 million.
10 million. It's all we levy was 10 million.
10 million, yep.
Right. So the levy is still the same. The levy doesn't change. What changes is how the, the properties are divi-, how the pro-, the tax bills are divided up among all the properties. But what would change is if we end a pilot agreement, we end a pilot agreement, that's a separate line item of revenue for the city, but it does not impact the levy.
So, so just to clarify again, the example, because I'm, I thought I heard it two ways. If we institute a new, um, non-pilot, just take something off the tax rolls because of the, um, changing it to institutional or something. At that point, then we would still have the same $10 million tax levy. It would just be across all properties excluding that one.
I don't think that is the case and Megan or Jessica, or John, help me out with this one. But I, I believe if a property is taken off the tax rolls and it's $20,000, that's $20,000 less that the city can levy. Would that be your interpretation, Megan?
That's my, what I understood from back then.
That it's not spread out then, it's that money from that property is lost. And then if the common council elects to institute a pilot program, it's made up, that $20,000 by the pilot agreement to make the city whole for what they lost by making the property tax exempt.
Thank you.
Alderman Doherty?
Well, I'd be very careful changing something. These were contractual items that were agreed upon by give and take. And they were settled and they were memorialized in several different ways. Cause even though the city attorneys talked about the one has, doesn't have the same standing, but it still has standing. These were organizations that put together something they agreed on. I wouldn't just overlook and overrun any of that. And sure, things change over time, but I, I, I think that, that's, there's a reason these are here. They were negotiated. They're here. I don't see a reason that's compelling to change that.
Uh, Alderman Vukovich?
Um, Mayor, is the amount of the tax increased or decreased from year to year, or is it the same amount that it was when it was implemented?
If the properties were put back onto the tax rolls now, they, they would be reassessed currently at whatever the current value of the property is.
No, what I mean.
Oh, do the pilot agreements, do they have a, a cost of living? And that, I don't know. Do, do the pilot agreements have an escalator or are they a flat fee?
So just off the top of my head, they, all the agreements are written differently. And Nathan, if you have them, please help me out. Some of them include a.
See, this is the other problem is that they're all three different. There's an MOU and multiple different kinds of, of. Right. But we needed a policy that said they're all uniform from this point forward.
Out of negotiations aren't necessarily always the same. That's what negotiations are.
I have my question answered, please.
Okay, hold on. Carl, can you answer our question?
The answer is definitely sometimes in some of the agreements, it calls for what the assessed value is. So if the assessed value of the property increases, then the property taxes in lieu of the payment would increase. If it caused for a flat fee, then obviously it's a flat fee, but I can't tell you specifically which ones call for what.
Whitefish Bay is a thousand dollars a year and has been for however.
Yeah, it's a thousand and eight dollars and it's been that way for as long as I remember.
Well, okay. Yeah, go ahead. City attorney? Mike, there we go. Hello? There we go. Okay, it's on. Um, I think the easiest way to understand this, when, when you're looking at it is take a real world example. So, um, if, for example, um, you, you, you pass a policy that says no religious organization would ever have to, or would ever be asked to pay a pilot. So then let's say you get, you know, something happens and you've got some commercial properties that are vacant and you get somebody that comes in and wants to put in a big mega church and says, um, we want to put a big mega church, huge church in here and, and it's going to be tax exempt. But in order to do that, we need a conditional use. Um, or we need, we need to change the zoning to make that happen. Well, if you've got the policy in place, then you just don't change the zoning. I mean, so it's, it's, if you, if you either change the zoning, it's going to be tax exempt, um, because you're not going to ask them for the pilot. Um, or, um, you know, you, you, you don't, and then, and then you just, you just keep it on the tax rolls. So it, it, you know, you can always just not approve the thing to allow it to happen if it doesn't fit the zoning. If, if you do that, right? I mean, that's.
We need a policy to that regard?
Well, I mean, right now it's just on a case by case basis.
Okay.
So, I mean, but if you, but that, it, it, you'll know going in, if, if you, if you have a policy that says no religious organization would ever be asked to pay a pilot, you'd know going in with your eyes wide open, if you got a request like that and said, hey, we'd like to put this mega church in, but we need, we want you to give us a special, um, special exemption or a conditional use permit in order to do that. Well, then you know, you know, if you don't want to lose the, the, uh, the revenue, then you just, you just don't give the conditional use, you know?
Yeah, the common council still has to make the elective decision to make the change for zoning to allow the church or any other non-for-profit to come to Glendale. And that's a separate process.
Well, I mean, we have, we have, uh, suggestions, you know, before, so we could just leave things as they are, not do anything. Uh, if there's no motion from anybody, that's the way things will be. If anybody wants to make a motion to adopt any of the, the, uh, template language that's been presented by the, the city administrator, we'd be open to that at this point too. So if I hear nothing in the next 10 seconds, I'll assume there's no motion and we'll move forward.
I actually think, just to continue the discussion, um, we got ourselves in this situation because we haven't had a kind of a policy to go by. And we can always override that potentially as a council. I, I think that I, I do have some feelings that because we are very much locked in by the state on what we do for, um, our levy, we should probably have, if someone approaches us, if it's something that comes off the rolls, we should be exploring a pilot agreement. Now, I think we should have flexibility for what that is, based on what's happening. But I think that should be our, our standard policy, in my opinion. I feel in some regards, like some of these are kind of interesting, like, you know, state and county offices. You know, they already are taxing jurisdictions, you know, or s- public schools already are taxing jurisdictions as well. So.
When the Department of Corrections was located in the spot where Meta House was going to be.
Right.
They rented the space and the lease agreement. So that, that property owner was still paying property taxes.
Right. Yeah, good point. So, so generally speaking, that's, that's a good way of looking at it. Um, so, and so from my perspective, I think we should just make that kind of our, our going in position. And then as far as the existing agreements, I, I think they're contractual. We shouldn't need to revisit them. I think we just should make sure that everyone knows that if you're going to come and take something off the tax rolls, then there's, there may be a pilot agreement with that. Uh, I do feel what we have today though, is unfortunate because we have some religious institutions on this list that are paying and aren't paying. And I don't think it's even across different religions. It's some synagogues are paying some arms. And, um.
Because, uh, that's Israel and ASKT don't pay.
Right. Yep.
But.
They are not on the list.
Lubavitch and Oritora both do.
Right. So, so maybe that's something we can revisit later is how to make that more equitable. Um, it's almost a shame we can't, you know, go in other directions. Like maybe this is a question, if I, if I could ask our, our attorney. Let's say someone has a new use on an institutional, um, and they are already not paying taxes. Is that something we could revisit and say, you know, you're putting something new on this institutional? And we need to do a plan review and, you know, there might be a pilot with that because, um, it would go a little further than what we're even.
For example, the Stretch property being turned into a.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's going from a college, which we didn't have in the city that had a, a very, you know, prominent, um, benefit to the city. And I, I think going to having two high schools, we already have a high schools. We have a bunch of schools. Um, I, I don't know. That could have been a, a much different development if it were to be vacated and we were to rezone it. But again, it's already institutional. I don't know if we have to go there or would even want to. But just thinking about, let's say, someone sells an institutional property and then they put something else on, um, I guess it'd have to meet the zoning requirement. So, uh, just thinking about what situations would trigger that review, other than what's listed here.
I don't think there would be. If it meets the zoning, um, and you know, they've, they put in a permit application, a building permit application that is commensurate with whatever the zoning is at the time. There's cases that say that the, you know, the builder has a property interest in it at that point. And then if we try to pull the rug out and say, well, wait a minute.
Right.
You know, then, then we, that's when we get in trouble. But, um, but yeah, I mean, you know, to, to, to your point that if there's a change, you know, that if they come hat in hand to the city and say, we need this accommodation for the city in order to be able to undertake this use that is tax exempt. And if the city is not in any, um, position legally to have to allow that, then each side has some bargaining, you know, bargaining power to say, okay, well, we'll grant you a conditional use or a special exception for X, Y, and Z. And in exchange for that, you're going to be allowed to operate, you know, the, the mega church or whatever it is. And that'll come off the tax roll, but the only way we're going to do that and grant that is if you agree to make X, Y, and Z payments in lieu of taxes. So that's, you know, that's, that's how these things come about. They don't, they don't come about when, um, there's no, you know, when there's no accommodation coming, coming from the city. Because otherwise, why, why would you bother to? Why, why would you agree to, to make a voluntary payment unless you were compelled to for some reason?
All these existing ones, except for probably, well, maybe even the one that's the Whitefish Bay. It was because they were prior tax revenue generating properties. So it seems like that's the going in position that we've had for this. So in that sense, it's, it's an unfortunate timing situation more than anything else for these organizations. Um, so I guess that would be what I would suggest. Um, I would say, um, I would move that we have a policy that if a organization were to come in and ask for a change of, of use or on the, the zoning, that would make it a non-taxable property, we would explore a pilot agreement that could be negotiated with our, um, our city, um, administration.
That's basically what Carl has put forward here.
Right.
This, this is, you could, you could just make a motion that we adopt this policy. The, the document that Carl's brought forward. Cause this is, this explains all the different reasons why with good conditions would trigger a pilot. I mean, that's, that's how this was.
Right. Yeah. These are the ones that would basically be listed, including cemeteries twice.
Then we're not being selective at that point. We have criteria.
Right. Right. And, and it's, and then we, if we want to do something with the existing agreements, we can always renegotiate those. That's the kind of way I look at it. Like if we feel that something else needs to be done with.
Are you making a motion then to adopt what Carl has presented as, as a policy then?
Um, yes. So he has listed as use permits, planned developments, voluntary. Yeah. Why would someone just pay us voluntary? But okay. Um.
The one question that we would have is we'd have to put this in a policy, I think, for, to come back and adopt. Because in the last page, it has a number of different options that in my.
Oh.
How we calculate the council was sure on how you wanted to do it based on the assessed value. There was one group that we were negotiating with a reduced rate because they were primarily going to rely on police and fire. We figured they were about 70% of the general fund tax rate. So we were going to reduce the rate based on that. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Nathan, but we could be open and flexible to negotiate the amount of property in lieu of taxes based on a case by case basis.
That's a hundred percent true. And also after you've entered into them, again, these are just like any other contracts, the parties can come together and you could say, you know, oh, well, it's been X amount of years or decades since, and, um, based upon the actual amount of use of municipal resources that we've seen versus what was being paid, w- we'll agree to reduce it, increase it or otherwise, or get rid of it. I mean, you, you always have that option. It's your own, you entered into it. So you can do it, whatever you want with it.
Do you want to just, um, staff now has direction. He can bring it back to us at the policy at a future meeting?
Yeah, yeah. I would say let's, let's have that as the staff direction. And I, that's kind of the way I see it. I don't know if anybody else has more to add at this point.
I don't see why we're setting a policy to bind ourselves in something that's going to be fully negotiable. Why would we have a policy on that?
I guess the only, the only direction, sorry, staff is looking for is whether or not we negotiate these moving forward. And the answer is yes, then I think it would be nice to have that direction. If you want to put that in a policy, um, I think that would be helpful just to lay out the parameters. And we will keep it as flexible as you guys want it.
Well, don't we do this already? I mean, isn't that, you know?
Well, the thing we have is we have four different agreements right now. And every single one of them is in a completely different format. They're constructed completely differently. Several of them were filed with their registered deeds. One of them wasn't. I mean, there isn't, there isn't a consistency.
I don't know. I've done thousands of contracts. Not a lot of them are identical.
Isn't each, each entity a unique entity that whatever their needs are met?
Yes, but isn't there also like, we look at every one of our memos that comes before us in our packets. There's a, there's a template. There's a pol-, there's, there's a way in which we do it. Every time we do a resolution, Megan formats them a certain way that they all look the same. Anyway, there's.
I, I hear you. I just don't agree with it for this.
Can I just make a comment real quick? So I, I think from a staff perspective, and John can correct me if I'm wrong, because we've tried to look up the history on these pilot agreements to find out why. So why did this one qualify for a pilot? Why did this one not? And some of that has been very difficult. So from a staff perspective, it would be nice to know under what circumstances a policy was negotiated, why are we doing this? So we could have looked back to maybe seen, oh, this is why this one was done this way and not done that way. Cause we were basically not, didn't have a whole lot of direction on where to go on, why some had a pilot and one did not. And, you know, Brian and I looked through, you know, the zoning map and where some of the institutions are located. And it was difficult to come up with anything to say why. And that I think would be helpful for staff now and then moving forward. You know, if it's 20 years from now, we still have these, this argument, or not argument, this discussion could occur then. And it would be helpful to have that document to say, why did we do this?
And, and actually the zoning for these, we've got one in a PD, one in an M1, one in a B1, and one in an R7.
Well, is the idea that we're going to renegotiate these things with these four entities? Is that?
I, I don't think, I don't think that anybody up here has the appetite for that. That's what I've gotten from all of you.
It would just simply give staff the direction to negotiate these in the future. I think that's all we're looking for.
Are we really just saying if the staff had kept better directions over the last 30 years, we'd know? Aren't we saying that?
Yes.
I, I didn't make that statement, but if that's.
I'm saying you did make it indirectly. You don't know. We don't have any literature to explain why.
I think we're all just saying that going forward, should there ever be a question about was this done in a discriminatory fashion? We can say, no, this was a policy that we made and it wasn't made on one religious institution. It was made because this is a policy that we set forth. I think that, that, that's why I think city's asking for that. And so I, I agree, every contract will always be uniquely different and will constantly, constantly need to be modified and adjusted. But I think giving them some framework to work within will be a valuable tool to allow them to work cleaner going forward.
But that's, isn't that what the, the history of our city attorney would do then? He would be able to, whatever he already does to negotiate.
Didn't we already have that conversation earlier when he called his city attorney and couldn't get the answer? So.
He called the previous one, so now he has to follow. But with respect, every entity is unique and their circumstances. Cause there's no way you're going to duplicate what's happened 20 years ago financially with this, with the city of Glendale because of economic situation. So we're already negotiating anyways.
So I think. I appreciate order and I like it. I tend to run a pretty organized things I'm involved in. In this particular example, I don't see trying to box it in helps at all. I guess I'd be well favored putting a policy together that the city needs to document in a permanent file method, anything that's negotiated. So we know why we got there. I'd, I'd vote for that.
On, on the final items here though, if I may, like, should we say they should be at least keeping up with costs? Cause some of these are fixed and, and there, our costs do not stay fixed, you know, inflation. and, and there, our costs do not stay fixed, you know, inflation and such. And maybe we just give them that groundwork and then say, if there's any deviation from the assessed value of property, um, we should know why we deviated from that, from our policy and put that in the contract. So like, we anticipate that we won't need a lot of police service because of X, Y, and Z. And so for that reason, we're adjusting the pilot agreement down so much or something along those lines.
If a, if a policy is not desired, we could certainly take the approach of drafting a sample contract that would include a number of wherethes that sort of gets us to that framework. And then it leaves the rest of it sort of many options as possible, or just leave it blank. So we sort of know whereas why we are here. I guess that's the help thing. And if we could bring it back to the common council or we could draft it and have it internally, but that would be helpful. I guess we're, we're, we're looking for just direction on, on, on where to go. What I think we have it that we want to continue with pilot agreements. And, and that's most of the direction that we need.
So what I heard from up here, you got at least one or two people that don't necessarily want you to create framework, but it sounds like you have several that do want a framework. So I would say at this point, at, at this point, my recommendation would be to bring back a framework and we can have a vote as a council. I don't know how that vote falls, but right now it sounds like there's at least one or two votes up here. There'd be no, and sounds like there's a couple of votes up here that would be a yes, but we don't have a framework to vote on at this point. So I would say, um, if it, if it, it's a benefit staff. If you feel like having a framework would be helpful and you want to bring one back, then we'll have that voted a future meeting. And thank you for the time put into this. Thank you also, all of you for actually having this conversation. Cause when I was approached by the, uh, one of the rabbis about the fact that they had this MOU and were paying taxes and that they felt like they were strong armed into it, but they didn't have a choice, so they couldn't purchase the property. It, it, it bothered me and it still bothers me actually that we're requiring this of religious organizations that have come into the city in the last twenty years. But all the other ones who were here beforehand get a free pass, including their schools they operate as well. But I appreciate us at least, all of us at least having a conversation and discussing it and, and letting this be out there in the open for the public. So yeah, Alderman Doherty.
I appreciate what you're saying, Brian, but also you got to look at history, right? If we could go back and redo all the zoning in the city, we probably wouldn't end up with what we have. It would change. So a lot of things across time, it's not fair to say, well, in eighteen hundreds, they just didn't do this right. Well, they did their best they could at the time. And that's been true of all these all along, and that is part of the history of the way the world works. So I'm not, I don't feel as bad as you're feeling on it, but I appreciate and respect why, why you feel that way. But I'm just saying it, it, things change.
Yeah.
Things happen and something could happen at a time that we'd all be very positive on it or agree on it completely. Five years later, we might all go, well, if it happened today, we wouldn't do it that way. And that doesn't make it wrong at the time. It's just the way history is.
And perhaps we should be happy that because these things were flexible enough to be put into place, we do have these organizations in our, in our city, even though they may be, you know, paying for some of the things that we could have had otherwise. But uh, but yes, um, I, I think that's a good suggestion. Just get some kind of framework put together so that we have a starting point. And the starting point's the same for everybody. So we all know going in what it's going to look like, at least for um, the next mega church that wants to move into town.
Thanks. And large properties, right? They've all been much smaller properties. Yeah. All right. So we'll move on then. Thank you for the conversation, everybody around the, around the pilot agreements. And thank you to staff for the, the research and time that was put in here. Um, we'll move on then to item four C, which is recommendation from the Legislative Judiciary and Finance Committee to approve the application for a Class B beer retailer license and Class B liquor retailer license filed by the Wisconsin Athletic Club. I don't know. Do I turn this over to the clerk or the, the chair of L and J?
We had moved forward to bring to the council, so it was on a majority vote that you would approve it.
The recommendation is uh, from uh, Ellen J. Do you, would you like to make a motion then? Okay, moved by Elder Woman Shaw. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Schmelzling. Um, any, any discussion?
I have a discussion. When was that?
All right, Elder Woman Vukovich, say that again.
When was that voted on?
The committee met right before the council meeting tonight at five forty-five.
All right.
All right. Any, any other comments or questions? All right, can I get a motion? Or sorry, a motion's been made. Um, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Carries? Next, uh, items D and E go together. If you recall, we actually approved something along the lines of item E at our last meeting. But there was a problem, so Carl's going to explain to us, I guess, the five year capital improvement plan that we'd approved didn't include some things. And so now he's back with a new one and then that changes the agreement with um, uh, with Clark Deets. So I'll turn it over to Carl.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. Yeah, I'm one of the few people that does have a computer, one of the many computer people that does have a computer and um, we, we presented a, a capital improvement plan several months ago that was adopted by the council. Um, after we went through the engineering agreement for the services and the roads and the water mains to be repaired, we noticed that the one that was presented was one of the first versions. Uh, Microsoft One Drive has a problem of reverting things back to its original format and not notifying you of that. And that's happened to me on a number of occasions. I know it happened to Clark Deets on a number of things. So we've taken steps to prevent that from happening in the future. Um, so we have modified the capital improvement plan. The one you guys originally proposed had the city um, resurfacing most of Gene Nicolay, which is being done by the state. So um, that doesn't need to be done anyway. So we've modified the capital plan, which is included in the packet. Um, asking the council to adopt the revised capital improvement plan, mainly changing the water main and street um, programs for the five years and a couple of the outliers for the alley rehabilitation in the, the latter couple of years.
And then the next item, then the, the contract that we had approved with Clark Deets at the last meeting, essentially because I haven't signed anything yet, that, that, that contract is not in, in effect. And you're back with a new total for this one, correct? The last one was six hundred and some thousand?
Yeah, that is correct. The one that was approved was six hundred and twenty-two thousand. This is the contract for the design and construction engineering for the projects that um, were adopted in the budget um, with the cost and those, those are accurate. And then on the screen in front of um, everybody and on the TV, um, I know it's hard to see. We're going to send this out tomorrow, but we wanted to present it to you guys first, because I think this was a good thing that Charlie and Clark Deets put together, which is a map of the location and the types of improvements to be constructed uh, with the two thousand twenty-four CIP program. Uh, you, you'll look at this and you'll look at the I forty-three project and redoing a Nicolay school. It's, it's hard to find an area of Glendale that has not going to be touched by um, capital improvements um, in the last several years. So uh, this is the map that shows, you know, roads, water mains, the new bike paths and sidewalks that will be constructed and designed in twenty-four.
All right, any questions from members of the council? Yep, Alderman Gellhard.
Oh, Carl, I, I did see Daphne Road on there. And uh, that's the, you know, the road just south of Nicolay where they had all that heavy equipment that ripped up the road and my neighbors have been on me about, are you going to be redoing that? And it seems to me that that's going to be part of the Gene Nicolay Road of, you know, reconstruction. Is that right?
Yeah, a portion of it. So I don't know how many feet in Charlie of Daphne Road will be resurfaced by the state um, when they go in, I think to the first driveway. Yeah, to the first driveway. Yep.
Alderman Doherty? Okay, um, I did have a question. I'm looking at the map that you've got up right now. And I know we still had a couple of alleys in Crestwood that were not done and they don't seem to be indicated on the map. And this does show alley reconstruction.
It does. Yeah, the alleys that were agreed upon initially, and that did not change as part of the revised CIP plan was to redo the two alleys in Spreckerville uh, near Rock Place. So those are down um, in District One and Tameka's District. Um, I believe the Crestwood ones are, I don't have the list in front of me. It's either next year or twenty twenty-six, but those are um, high on the list as well.
All right, they just weren't, so this is only the twenty twenty-four projects.
This is only the twenty twenty-four projects. Yeah, the ones in Rock Place down by Spreckerville, they're in really bad shape. Um, I don't know how much of it's the result of the I forty-three project and the reconstruction of the sound wall, but they got it pretty hard. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of it. All right, can we get a motion first then to approve the revised five year CIP?
I moved.
Move by Alderman Bailey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gellhard. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Motion carries. And then next is the agreement with Clark Deets. This is essentially the same agreement that was before us at our last meeting. However, there's a couple of items that were changed in it and the, the amount was lowered to five ninety-two. So we get a motion to approve the agreement with Clark Deets.
I'll move.
Move by Alderman Doherty. Is there a second? Second, by Elder Woman Shaw. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Uh, next agreement with MMSD in the city of Glendale for the reforestation of several properties on North Sunny Point Lane.
Good. Yes, I'll provide a quick summary and uh, Charlie Imig is here for any specific questions. He was the one who negotiated this and put this together. So thanks for him for doing that. Um, essentially MMSD is going to provide um, twenty-five thousand dollar reimbursement to the city to plant trees on the properties near Sunny Point that were purchased in a reforestation effort. Um, MMSD is going to be responsible for planting them. Uh, we're simply responsible for purchasing the trees and protected deer coverage and water bags and maintaining the trees. Uh, we will be reimbursed for a hundred percent of those costs. We will not exceed the twenty-five thousand dollars under any circumstances. So Charlie um, promised all of us and is doing it again as part of the motion. Um, and that, that's essentially what the agreement is.
All right, any questions from members of the council? All right, can we get a motion to approve the agreement, the intergovernmental agreement with uh, MMSD, please?
I'll move.
Move by Alderman Doherty.
Second.
Second, Alderman Gellhard. Um, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Carries? Finally, an ordinance amending the due date for utility bills from twenty days to thirty days. We have had um, a number of issues with the mail delivery. It's local. You'd think mailing it in Glendale, it's going in Glendale. And we've had things get delayed for weeks. We've had uh, quite a few of the water payments that have come into City Hall have the yellow sticker on that were already returned to the sender and address unknown. Really, City Hall's been here since like nineteen fifty-five, right? But yet there's just so many issues with the post office that in most bills at this point are in net thirty. And so giving people a little bit more time, especially with some of the mail delivery issues we've had. So um, I know, um, I had said to Carl, I think it was the January bill or December bill, one of them, I said, I go, yeah, I got it today. Today's a due date. It's the day I got the bill in the mail. So giving people a little bit more time is, is helpful. We did waive fees for a lot of them that were, for quite a few of them that were late. Actually, we late waived fees for well, an entire month, didn't we?
Yeah, we waived fees for a number of months because when we switched over to put everybody in the same billing cycle, uh, if you had um, your bills quarterly, according to our current system, it stays quarterly, but it's on the wrong monthly payment. So we gave people grace period to get that corrected.
All right, um, so we have before a Senate ordinance that amends the due date. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
I'll move.
Move by Alderman Gellhard.
Second.
Second, Alderman Schmelzling. Um, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Commission Committee Board and Staff Reports. Um, I will start with um, Alderman Vukovich.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Alderman Doherty?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Gellhard?
Nothing to see me.
Bailey?
Nothing.
Schmelzling?
Nothing.
Shaw?
Nothing.
All right, chief? All right, city clerk? City attorney?
This is lawsuits being filed in relation to voting and absentee ballots and uh, we're keeping an eye on that and doing our best to be on top of all of the decisions to make sure that uh, every vote counts here.
Thank you, city administrator?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, I just have one thing from the ICC meeting today. Um, you probably recall there was an incident, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, where someone fired a gun from somewhere over around Tetonia, but it went through the wall of a house in Glendale in a tot, yes, yeah, on Argyle, just across the street from Joanne, uh, went into a toddler's room right above their crib. Um, there are a couple of houses down. They had a couple of bullets. They found uh, holes in their garage. And a couple of houses down from them, there were a couple found on the slab by their, by their garage. So um, the celebratory gunfire though, it created, it started, sorry, I went and visited with the family and they said, what can we do? And I said, you know what? I'm going to reach out to the sheriff. I had a really good conversation with the sheriff, um, uh, January second or third or fourth, somewhere around there. Talked with her and I said, well, what can we do with these issues of that cross municipal boundaries? And, and in that conversation, I said, you know, just in the last couple of weeks, we had a bank robbed in Fox Point and the chase went through Glendale, Whitefish Bay and into Milwaukee before they stopped the person. We've had cars that get stolen in Milwaukee and they go through, you know, a chase that goes all through the North Shore and they don't stop them till they get to Mequon or they get back into, into Shorewood or, or Milwaukee. And I said, what, what do we do with this? And she's, and the course of that, she said, you know, that's a really good conversation um, for us to have at an ICC meeting. So today the sheriff came and actually had a really good conversation with us. One of the biggest problems we have though is Milwaukee has one radio system and all the suburbs have another radio system. And so it's really hard for them to communicate. Like for example, if a call comes into the North Shore nine-one-one dispatch, we have mutual aid with all the North Shore. We could get a call at Bay Shore and all of our police can't get there, but Whitefish Bay can and Whitefish Bay gets there first and they take care of it. It's mutual aid. You know, and the same thing happens across the community, uh, across the, the, the other seven communities. Um, um, but the the fact that like if Milwaukee has a problem and there's a pursuit, they have to patch into our nine-one-one so that our police can know that something's coming our way. And they're just, so the communication is not great and the ability to want to communicate across um, uh, across platforms uh, is also, it, it obviously would be expensive too. Um, all other seventy-one counties have one nine-one-one dispatch for the entire county. They're all on the same radio network. So, so the sheriff said today, she goes, these issues are happening across the state. A car could get stolen in Appleton and it goes through Kimberly and it finally gets stopped in Cocona. You know, those kinds of things are happening elsewhere, but when they're all on the same radio system, it is so much easier to be able to communicate those issues. Um, so a, a really good conversation today, but it got us all talking. I think because we've already consolidated nine-one-one dispatch in the North Shore and we are the designated PSAT for the county. I think it's going to raise uh, opportunity now for us to work with, you know, the South Shore and some of the other suburban communities to see if we can't start, you know, sharing a lot more information across um, I, I, about these issues that cross municipal boundaries. It still doesn't change the fact though, that a lot of the issues seem to originate in Milwaukee, but they end up stopping, the, the criminals get stopped somewhere in the suburbs. Um, yes, Alderman Shaw.
Add on to your comment, that was a discussion back in twenty fourteen and fifteen now already.
Yep. And still, still ongoing and it's because all the, but all the rest of the suburban communities now have the same radio system. We all use Phoenix. It's Milwaukee that uses a different one and those two platforms don't speak very well with one another. There's a patching way that they can do it, but they have to be given approval and it, it's very limited and it's just not. Yes, it's not easy. One, one thing she did say though, that um, when the DNC was coming to town in twenty twenty, they did say that there was a plan put in place that the radio systems would be used by all the shared officers, because officers are going to go in, you know, with the RNC this summer, they're going to utilize the same plan. And so they put a plan in place in twenty twenty, it never got utilized, but this year they're going to, um, they're going to with the RNC that essentially our officers are going to be, when that, when Glendale officers are working the RNC, they're going to be handed radios and they'll all be on the same, they'll all be on the same radio system. So. Yeah, but um, so that was the interesting thing from the ICC meeting today and that concludes, the fire department meets tomorrow morning via Zoom. Um, you're all welcome to attend. I mean, the riveting meetings, so. Anyway, that concludes my report. So. All right, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Bailey, seconded by Gellhard. All in favor of adjourning, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
I know, I hate it when she's right.